Hey, good evening, folks. It is Tuesday, November 9th at 7:00 PM and we're in the council chambers in the city of Platteville and I am calling this regularly scheduled meeting of the common council to order. Candace will start with roll call.
Barbara Dos.
Here.
Ken Killian. Eileen Nichols. Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott is excused. Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda tonight then is a presentation on public library, on the public library. So, Jessie, welcome you to the podium.
Good evening.
And for those in the audience, yeah, Sarah and Mallory, you're probably in Jason, you're probably gonna have to look. Okay.
Alright, good evening, thank you for giving me this opportunity to provide an update to you all about the Platteville Public Library's current staffing situation. As you all know, a little over four years ago, we doubled our square footage and did not add any additional staffing at that time. Over the past few years, it's become apparent to us that we do need some additional staffing to help us meet the needs of our community. However, as good stewards, we value our community's investment in the library and we know that we need to maximize our existing resources and do what we can right now to ensure staffing levels are stable and that we are providing consistent and capable service to our patrons. So, the intent of this project was to assess where the library is at currently in terms of staffing and where we might need to be headed over the next five to 10 years. We gathered information from city resources, library staff, and from other benchmark cities within Wisconsin. With that information in hand, we developed a framework to provide flexible guidance to address some of our immediate needs and to help us move forward intentionally and proactively. So, early in 2021, we partnered with Wills, which is a Wisconsin library consulting firm, to help us gather information regarding Platteville's employment landscape, pure library information, and to take an in-depth look at our internal operations and potential areas for improvement. Throughout the planning process, we gathered data, conducted interviews with library staff in benchmark cities, distributed staff surveys, and hosted an in-person staff in-service to create a shared vision. Based on the big picture themes from the information we gathered, we were able to create a staffing plan framework with forward-looking goals. So, a little bit about our current challenges and opportunities. The library currently has five full-time employees, eight part-time employees, four employees that work less than part-time and those would be people like our substitute custodians, student workers, and our IT support. And we also have two current vacancies. While this may sound like an abundance of employees, I want to highlight the unique services we're offering and the many demands placed on these employees throughout the week. Prior to the pandemic, we were operating 65 hours a week, 65 hours a week, seven days a week. Our two-story building with three service desks requires four employees to be present when we're open to the public. We are fortunate to have a wide patron base. We are serving all members of the community regardless of religious, racial, social, economic, or political status, mental, emotional, or physical condition, age, gender, gender expression, or sexual orientation. This means that we are providing unique services to many different audiences. Our strategic plan had also identified an opportunity for the library staff to further engage with our community via outreach and we have been actively expanding our off-site offerings to include visits to schools, community events, and daycares. Many of our positions at the library are low-paying, part-time jobs with required night and weekend shifts. Prior to the pandemic, employees were often at work until 8:00 PM closing and then arriving at 8:30 in the morning to open up the next day. So, our city classifies employees as regular part-time, which is 20 hours a week, three-quarters time, or full-time. Prior to my arrival in this position, some employees had been appointed to work less than three-quarters time but more than 20 hours a week and unfortunately, we don't have a way to prorate their leave time to reflect the hours that they're working. We also know that over 40% of our staff are currently eligible or will be eligible for retirement within the next five years and we do want to be mindful about the needs of our organization and the community when hiring those replacements. As we're seeing nationwide, the job market is changing and we know that this will continue to impact our candidate pool. So, now that you have some background information about the methodology we used and why we feel like this was the time to conduct an assessment, I'll go through a few of the needs that we identified and how we can work to address them. The first need we identified was centralization. Staff indicated a desire for streamlined work responsibilities and more off-desk time to work on projects. And when we say off-desk time, that refers to the hours that we're not staffing a public service desk. For example, an employee might work a four-hour shift and spend two of those hours at a service desk and two of those hours off-desk in the back, making phone calls, attending meetings, planning programs, ordering books, et cetera. Staff also indicated an interest in shifting to a team-based model for some work areas such as programming, outreach, marketing, and collection development. As library work continues to evolve thanks to technology improvements and community input, library structures are changing and shifting to a centralized, team-based approach. During our interviews with other public libraries, we discovered that there are libraries in the state that are moving towards these more centralized team approaches, including libraries in Fond du Lac, Ashkash, and Madison. So, our plan, we set our goal to focus on centralizing some work responsibilities in order to be nimble, to restructure staff workloads, and to increase approachability at the public service desks. So, when we talk about approachability, we want our employees looking at the patrons, greeting them, not sorting through a cart of books because that's the only time they have to work on that project. So, we're already making steps towards centralizing duties such as collection development and maintenance before our children's department and adult services department were each responsible for doing their own repairing of materials, ordering of materials, and maintaining of collections and now we're working on transitioning to that, to a primary employee taking the lead and then other employees train as backups. You can also see this happening with our outreach and in community engagement. Hopefully, some of you saw us out and about this summer on the book bike. We had members of our adult services, youth services, and circulation services teams out and about to greet the community and raise awareness about library services. So, another area of need that we identified was for improved consistency and continuity. Many staff members identified coverage and scheduling concerns. Staff need to know that there is adequate coverage for them to use the leave time they have earned without inconveniencing the rest of the team. We also know that we need to create a cross-trained backup team to help cover all reservice points and we also know that documented procedures are necessary to help with succession planning, onboarding, and training. So, our goal is to focus on consistency and continuity internally and in our public-facing services. The staff will have defined, clear, and fair work expectations. We will create impactful redundancies across, through cross-training and the public will have a consistent, positive experience at all service points and programs. So, about this goal, we have been working on cross-training select staff in certain positions and will continue those efforts. As our staffing situations change, we will continue to examine the number of hours allotted for positions so that we're working towards consistency, for example, eliminating some of those 29-hour-a-week positions in favor of a regular part-time, which is 20, a three-quarters time, which is 30, or a full-time, which would be 40 hours a week. We also intend to revise our public hours of operation to allow for increased staff prep time, training, and communication. It's true that we have been operating in limited service hours during 2021 and that has largely been due to COVID considerations. Our pre-COVID operating hours would not have been able to accommodate employees that would need to quarantine. Also, due to retirements, relocations, and resignations, we have been consistently short-staffed throughout 2021. I'm happy to report, we did recently hire a full-time outreach coordinator and we do anticipate being fully staffed by the end of this month. The library board has already approved revised permanent operating hours, which will go into effect at the end of November. So, we already have a fair number of our daily procedures documented and now we're working on compiling them into a comprehensive file that will be accessible to all staff and we were made aware of a few gaps that need to be covered to ensure that we can maintain continuity in the event of an unplanned absence. So, the next need to remain a competitive employer, that's something that has been a common theme nationwide and one that cannot be overlooked as we strive to recruit and retain excellent library employees. The staff survey indicated that many of our team members were dissatisfied with their pay rates and access to benefits such as healthcare. We have a high turnover rate, especially in our regular part-time positions and some of our employees are reporting that they need to work multiple jobs while employed by the library. The library does have a separate compensation plan from the rest of the city and rates of pay for library employees performing similar duties as employees in other city departments are not consistent. Our goal is for the library to be a desirable place to work and for us to be a competitive employer within the library community and within the Platteville area. We would like to recruit and retain people that want to work at the library and want to be a part of the library team for a long time. We recognize that this goal makes, may take some time and this presentation is intended to introduce the community and the council to our future goals. We will strive to address pay inequities, connect more staff to benefits, and create more desirable positions that will stay filled for longer periods of time. We know that our timeline will need to remain flexible to accommodate our current staffing levels, the demands of the community, and budgetary restrictions and/or future budgetary opportunities. Therefore, we're operating under this three-horizons model that's intended typically for business growth. We're looking at Horizon One as our core operations, making short-term changes that are closely aligned with core workflows and operations, basically making our current situation better by plucking some of that low-hanging fruit. Horizon Two will allow for us to make changes as retirements or resignations happen and new hires are made. And then Horizon Three will take us to our blue-sky staffing, which will allow us to make changes as opportunities emerge and some of those changes are already happening. I think you've probably seen some of those updates in council packets in the past and we see other opportunities on the horizon and we're currently preparing for those. So, at the Platteville Public Library, our mission is to empower and connect our diverse community by providing equal access to resources that educate, enrich, and entertain. We are here to help our community and I know that if we take care of our employees, they will continue to take care of our patrons. Therefore, our blue-sky staffing vision includes improved outcomes for both the public and our employees. The public will feel welcomed and prioritized. They will receive consistent customer service experiences throughout the library. They will be proactively connected to resources by confident, knowledgeable, and experienced staff and patrons will see staff out and about engaged in the community through various outreach and involvement opportunities. Internally, the employees will work in an environment that is nimble and efficient with clear workflows and a responsive staffing structure. Staff will have clearly defined duties and expectations and will feel confident in their roles. Employees will be able to use their earned leave time without disruption to public services, which will result in improved work-life balance and the library will continue to be a desirable place to work and stay throughout an individual's career. So, at this time, I would like to thank city manager Adam and administrative director Nicola and our human resources specialist Chad. They've all been very valuable resources as we've worked through some of our most recent changes and at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have right now. Otherwise, please don't ever hesitate to stop into the library for a chat, send me an email, or give me a call if future questions arise.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Jessie, it was very comprehensive and very well stated. If anyone had, any council member has any immediate question? Ken?
My question is, what presently are all of your sources of income for the library? Where are they coming from?
The majority of our income is coming from the city tax base and then a large portion also comes from our county funding, which is based on a formula that calculates the circulation or the number of items checked out by members of southwestern Wisconsin that live in an area that doesn't have a library. For example, I live in Ellenboro Township. When someone from my family checks out a material, that equates to maybe like a 13-cent reimbursement at the county level and it's always based on like a two-year prior rotation.
Okay, another question, you pointed out in here that the wages and salary for the people at the library have not kept up with what the city pays its employees. And that is, has that been true through the years?
No, and that's not, that's not quite the way I would phrase it. So, we just, the library is on a separate compensation plan from the rest of the city. So, I'm sure you'll recall, maybe that was like five years ago that we went through that process and at the time, the whole city went first and then the library did kind of like an add-on at the end. But it didn't leave us with an opportunity to be included in the rest of the city. So, there is a discrepancy there.
But your wages and salaries are lower in general as compared to city?
In some positions, I think there are some opportunities to do some, you know, equity work there but I think we would, I think it's part of like a broader city conversation, not just, you know, that's not just the library that needs to look at that stuff, I think.
So, Jessie, is it true that the library board takes the monies that come from the county and the city and determines how the money is spent? So, that is determined by the board?
That is correct, yes. And so, the way, we have typically followed what the rest of the city does in terms of the budgetary process. The extreme example that I've been given in all the years that I've been here is if a library board so chose, they could take all of the funding that had been allocated for books and DVDs and they could funnel that all towards staffing, but now would that be a responsible move? No, and so I think it is part of having a dialogue and being thoughtful about those decisions but I would never advise the library board to go in that direction.
Okay, if anybody else has questions, I'm sure that Jessie would welcome them either in person at the library or via email or similar and so we can, Ken? Oh, I was going to just say we can move on, but if you have another question, we can't move on.
I have a question. You are in need of additional funding.
It would appear to be so.
And what do you expect to get the additional funding?
We're working on that, I think that's part, and I do think that that ask could be coming down the road but before we dive into that deep, deeper issue, I want to make sure that we've done everything that we can within our power to do some of those, like I said, the low-hanging fruit or streamlining, streamlining some of the positions that we can fix without budget increases. So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah, and I think to piggyback off that a little bit, you know, those are the conversations that we've started to have, obviously, as department heads and kind of had conversations with the council about. Our plan in 2022 is to kind of do a more in-depth staffing analysis and staffing plan and kind of have that go in front of the council before we start the budgetary process and kind of truly look at, just as you kind of indicated, Ken, is, you know, we've seen, we've seen two things. There's, has been a continual, you know, need for either additional staff for, you know, taking things to the next level or going to the next department. On top of that is everything you have going on right now in the current economy, which is where we're seeing that now starting to flow. You know, in every single call I'm on with municipalities, this is a struggle across the board is you are seeing a shift where the private sector now is having to pay, you know, a lot more than they used to for starting level wages and for starting, you know, entry-level positions. Well, that now is starting to kind of dovetail into the public sector, which is, you know, Jessie kind of indicated. And as we've seen in talking with staff kind of this year is we're gonna have to do kind of a twofold analysis. We're gonna have to look at the long term of what each department thinks they're going to need as far as full-time positions, part-time positions, and then it's the, you know, long-term conversation of, okay, if we know that not only do you need that, but you have to have to be at this certain wage level, we gotta figure out the way to hit both of those and complete that. So, that's gonna be kind of a long-term process. You know, Jessie and the rest of the directors are kind of hitting on the first stage, which is you start internal and look at, you know, can you rearrange positions that have a very, either budget-neutral or no impact? And then, once you get to that point, it becomes the next request, which is, okay, we've done that, now we have to do this.
Hey, thanks, Jessie.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is consideration of a consent calendar and the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature. We have council minutes from October 19th, a special meeting in October 26th, regular meeting, the payment of bills, financial report for October. I have no appointments for boards and commissions. We have licenses tonight, a change of agent for the Class B combination, whoops. Combination, that's what happens when your computer goes. Beer and alcohol license for QuickTrip Platteville. Molly Joel as the agent for premises at 430 South Water Street. One-to-year operator licenses as detailed in your packet and the election cost-sharing agreement with Grant County.
Again.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to approve the consent calendar as presented. Candace will vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next portion of our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I have only received requests relative to appearing before the council as pertaining to the inclusive playground project. We generally then cover those at that time on the agenda. So, I've not received anything else, so I think there's no one else here to speak on any other item, except for me. And that is to point out that in today's shopping news, you should have all received our 53818 update. And Jody, I'm looking at you and I'm going to say thank you to you, but also to the rest of the staff for putting this together, lots of good information. This comes carried in your shopping news, so open it today. Take out your 53818 and read it and register for activities with our Parks and Rec Department and know what's going on in the next month or two as we celebrate holidays and so.
Join a board and commission?
Yeah, join a board and commission, right. Ken?
Yes, I received a phone call about Halloween hours. This person said that hours are too long, four hours, and the preference is to, I believe, cut them in half. So, this was a phone call from a person I knew. Next was the person that met me and said that the problem was there were too many hours and preferred fewer hours. So, I'm relaying this early to the chief of police as far as next year, as far as how many hours to recommend it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments, observations, or petitions, we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, which are reports. We have board, commission, and committee minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
No addition.
The redevelopment authority, Eileen? Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Nothing additional.
And the Public Transportation Committee, Lynn is not here. Anybody, no, Howard says nothing. Okay, other reports, we have the Water and Sewer Financial Report in the packet, the Airport Financial Report, the Task Force on Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Update, and Department Progress Reports. Anybody with any questions or comments on any of these?
I have a question.
Okay.
City manager.
Sir.
And this is down at the bottom of the first section.
This is in your Department Progress Report.
Met with Pedic Director and Emmy Roth to discuss staffing concerns, climate planning, and workforce housing initiatives. Could you explain that particular sentence?
Yes, so what that is, is we have started to meet with, I've started to meet now or will be meeting with a lot of the businesses within the industrial park. The Pedic Director is actually going to be transitioning to a different role, so that was part of it, was to kind of start that conversation. But one of the things that we have been kind of talking about has been a talking point in a lot of the kind of conferences and league webinars and meetings that I've been in is this concept of workforce housing. And me with Emmy Roth, you know, one of the things they pointed out is they, I think just like every business we've kind of heard from, are struggling to not only get employees, but then to retain those employees. And the reason for why they're struggling to retain them kind of run a gamut of options. Some of it is just the workforce in general. It's hard to get people to apply for certain positions. They've had to go through an analysis as well of looking at their hourly rates that they're paying and have had to raise those up. But then also, you know, childcare as well as workforce housing is one that has come up. So, that's a conversation that I've started to have with some of those business owners to see, you know, what would be the potential interest of potentially having businesses partner together where if we know that houses are being developed or apartments are being developed or are available, they potentially would either provide some form of a subsidy or a discount or, you know, money towards allowing those, you know, their employees to either buy a house or rent an apartment, those type of things. So, that's pretty much what that kind of conversation was kickstarting.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of the other reports?
Luke Peters says, "Met with representatives from Owens, Iversons, and Delta Three to discuss low areas in the pickleball courts." Would you explain if there's a situation there that needs to be?
Yeah, so I've been in talks with Delta Three mainly, primarily at this point. Delta Three has been our, as our engineer has been in talks with Iverson and Owens regarding some low spots on the south side of the pickleball court. We are noticing that there is between a half to one inch of dip in that area and we're looking at setting up a meeting, hopefully still this week, to kind of analyze so we can fully define the problem, discuss whether that's within the realm of, you know, a normal court, whether it be tennis or pickleball, and then if it is not, look at a potential solution and who's responsible for said solution.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then we're gonna move to the action portion of our agenda and in the interest of our audience, item F is the inclusive playground and I am proposing we move that to the first thing since we have a number of people here who have registered or registered in favor, registered against, or registered in general, or want to speak. Before we go to, oh, so, inclusive playground, Luke, do you wanna give our, give the staff background, please, first?
Sure, so at the last meeting, members of the Inclusive Playground Steering Committee gave a presentation to the council with their proposal, which is to install an inclusive playground in Platteville. They're asking council to consider locations. Their recommendation is Smith Park and, you know, several of those members are still here today, but they can answer other questions. At the last meeting, the council did ask staff to try to gather feedback for you. We have sent letters to all neighboring homeowners around Smith Park and also used our online presence to try to solicit feedback for you. I believe in the compiled list, you have about approximately 100 names of people that registered either in favor, against, or in general. Looks like the total, totals there were 98 in favor, one general comment and one against. I do know you have some additional green sheets that didn't make it to us in time that may have additional comments that would change those numbers slightly but the general feeling seems to be supportive but obviously, you may have received additional feedback beyond what we were able to compile for you. In terms of a staff recommendation, staff does favor the Smith Park location, especially option C, which would replace the existing playground equipment in Smith Park, allowing us to utilize that existing equipment to enhance other parks. In addition, allowing staff to work with, continue to work with this committee to locate the exact, you know, work in the exact location, exact details of that playground to minimize tree loss, because I think that is the primary concern with a Smith Park location, as we do, of course, know that everyone does love the large trees in that area. And we want to try to minimize especially the loss of any oaks that would be in good condition. And I think the committee has already committed to raising money to replace any trees that do have to or would potentially have to come down. But again, we would work to greatly minimize that and placing it where we would only be removing, you know, possibly trees that are in poor condition. But again, given the situation that we're replacing existing playground equipment, I don't think that's going to be a large finish.
Thank you. It's my understanding from Candace and from Adam that since we have had a number of people register in favor, I need to read those names for the record. And so I will be reading these names, and if you are in the audience and I murder your name, just bear with it, because not only do we have these ninety-nine on this sheet that I'll read, but we also have these, and I don't have a clue, so somebody can count perhaps. So I'll start with the sheets that were filed tonight, and then I'll go to the other sheet. So in favor, Alan and Tina Byrne, I believe. Sue and Jerry Oxenford, Zoe Gottzinger, Mitch Cress, Cara Cress, Patty Eggers, Lee Eggers, Andrew Tranel, Peyton Simon, Rachel Simon, Andrea Rosemeyer, Joe Rosemeyer, Caitlin Rosemeyer, Kate Bergman, Jacob Rosemeyer, Luke Dressler, Kaylee Bockup, Kim Tranel, Joey Schultz, Dave Bergman, Jean Weber, Kirsten Frye, McKenna Hagen, Ben Belkey, Logan Podlesnik, Zachary Adams, Stacy Hahn, oh, Sarah, Sarah in Oberstedt, Mallory in Oberstedt. I got it right, didn't I? Ann Donovan, John Spens, Sponsler, Rob Saris, Amber Button, Peter Wilkinson, Emily Zachary, Marie Mc McLean, maybe. Anne Rupp, Amy Butson, Tracy Allen, Renee Ryder, Carrie Bloom, Angela Roberts, Angela Boardman, Laura Grossman, Nancy Harrington, Erin Wernamont, Karina Holt House, Tony Rundy, Kelsey Duss? I think it's D. Michelle Sass, Sass, Denise Burngen, Jessica Poles, Karen Utley, Mackenzie Crace, Jamie Andrews, Matt Zalinski, Kim Zalinski, Jessica Schulenberg, Chris Schulenberg, Matt Bobkin, I guess, Megan, oh, Belkin, Stacy Pelton, Kristen Brecky, Stacy Temporally, Jackie Catherine, Diane Dressler, Jenna Smith. Those are from tonight. And registering in favor earlier, Kelly Frame, Melissa Walkwitz, Mia Notrot, Beth Gladys, Vicki Ryder, Travis Mast, Carly Anderson, Josh Anderson, Tyler Bolant, Keisha Bolant, Crystal Curry, Nate Curry, Debbie Sigworth, Jaden Larson, who notes she is a cognitive and visually impaired adult. Joey Larson, Matt Larson, Brooke Samantha Villanue, Andrew Villanue, Ian McKenzie, Sarah McKenzie, Jeff Keeter, Betty Keeter, Isabel Sander, Abigail New Cow, Haley Morrissey, Kristen Turner, Macy Blaybaum, Vicki Feldman, Cody Grimsled, Michelle Kellogg, Dr. Caroline Link, DDS, Deanna Norchild, Merrily Luder, Alexa Hardyman, Alyssa Mom, Jeff Mom, Hayden Link, Jason Julius, Tina Roth, Michelle Timlin, Ava Vulcaning, Mariah Gaffney, Dan Mom, Allison Klein, Michelle Cummins, Christine Wordle, Kristen Oz, Jody Halverson, Alyssa Keeler, Nicole Ty, Kelly Graney, Josh Tranel, Kalen Granal, Tranel, pardon me. Mike Dietzel, Phil Burr, Christina Burr, Kayla Dietzel, Tina Tranel, Kate Freiberger, Katrina Tranel, Travis Tranel, Stephanie Tranel, Kim Tranel, Andrew Tranel, Melissa Lipska, Sarah Keller, Caspian Gaven, Tristan Hirsch, Christina Curris, Ariana, Ariana Aranda, Hannah McCourt, Austin McCourt, Erin Im, Michael Lambert, Bridget Wilson, Billy McCourt, Rebecca Gottlieb, John Wilson. Those are people who registered and did not ask to speak. Now, is it true, Adam, I must read the comments of people who registered and wanted to speak and wrote comments?
Typically, if they're there, yes.
Okay, here we go. Tamer Osborne, register is speaking in favor. The city of Platteville has an inclusivity statement that states it values and supports equity, diversity, and inclusion. We believe in equity. We work to break down systems of oppression, bias, and hate to achieve a society where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. All children learn through play. Without play, children don't learn to their full potential. The inclusive park allows a place for all children to play and therefore learn. If the city of Platteville truly wants to achieve a society where everyone has the opportunity to thrive, then the inclusive park is a necessity toward that goal. If our kids aren't learning and they learn through play, then they will become adults who weren't given the tools to reach their full potential. Thanks, Tamer Osborne. We have Tracy Vanden. Hello, I'm not a Platteville resident, but I work in Platteville. As a mental health therapist, I frequently see families who would benefit from an inclusive playground. I think this would be a great addition to the wonderful city of Platteville. Thank you. Troy Magic, writing in full support of the proposed inclusive playground at Smith Park. Perfectly great location, great idea. Please get it done. Michelle Helm. I would like to express my extreme interest in encouraging the common council to approve the plans for an inclusive playground. I am not a resident of Platteville, however, I am a grandmother of one of your most special residents. My grandson, Bren Villanue. Bren has cerebral palsy, and it makes it hard for him to enjoy the typical neighborhood playground. I live in Waukesha. Many times when I come to see Bren and his sister, we need to travel to Dubuque in order for Bren to enjoy, to experience the joy of a playground that many people take for granted. I know I always did until I was faced with the challenges that a special needs child faces every day. Planning to load the kids in a car, drive a half hour, plan around naps and meals, and then drive another half an hour back home is a lot during a monthly visit, let alone on a daily or weekly basis. The happiness, happiness on Bren's face during the visits to the park in Dubuque is worth all the effort. I had always wished that my daughter and her family would have settled closer to Waukesha, especially after Bren was born. At times, I still do. The love and support the Platteville community has given her even before Bren was born has made me realize she has found a new home in Platteville, a city that is filled with a very loving and caring community. Kim Zeitler, registered in favor. If her comment, it doesn't appear to be there. Lorraine Groom, I say, I am in favor of the inclusive playground at Platteville, at City, at City Park, at City Park. Sonia Withrow, I am not a taxpayer in the city of Platteville, but I have kids in the school district, the special Olympics program for our region, and the school and community liaison for inclusivity. I support the inclusive playground, and I am one of the volunteers to move it forward. Please consider that a portion of the playground be indoor, or at least, a very least, have a roof. Zana Tomlin, I'm writing as a citizen of Platteville in full support of the inclusive playground project at Smith Park. The added parking, improved walkways, and inclusive bathrooms, along with the new fenced-in accessible play equipment, will be a welcomed asset to our community. I believe this place, space will not only benefit those with special needs, but our entire community that will gain access to a more diverse playground. Jennifer Martin, I have been following the plans for your town's proposed inclusive playground, and it is so exciting. I am from Lancaster, but have a friend in Platteville with a son in a wheelchair. We enjoy meeting up at parks, but this is the struggle because the parks and the areas aren't accessible. We have driven to the inclusive playground in Dubuque, but that's a bit of a trek for a playdate. I look forward to being able to enjoy more park playdates together closer to home, and this will be such a gift, not only to the Platteville community, but the surrounding area as well. Megan Slane, I am writing to express my support of the inclusive playground. As someone who grew up in Platteville and is now a resident of South Lancaster, it would give me yet another reason to make the short trek to Platteville to play with our friends who would most benefit from the playground. As a parent of a child with a disability, I understand how amazing it is to have others work to provide my son with the same opportunities others have. I believe Platteville would benefit immensely by building this playground. Kathleen Martin, we do have residents and younger children in Grant County that do have special needs, i.e. wheelchair-bound. It would be beneficial for them to have material at the park to enjoy the experience. For the above reason, I feel it would be beneficial to have a special needs park. Jessica Clifton, I think it would be phenomenal to have such a place for all children to play. Denise Johnson, as a teacher and mother of a child who has autism and vision impairments, I believe that an inclusive playground that supports the needs of all children with and without special needs is something my daughter would have benefited from when she was young. I see children every day at school and at our local parks struggle to maneuver and find something to meet their sensory needs. This park is imperative for our community, something our children and families are in desperate need of. Our community needs this, and our children deserve it. Claire Drag Dragons. While I am not a current resident of Platteville, I am a special education teacher at Neil Wilkens. Platteville has wonderful parks and playgrounds. An inclusive playground would be a great addition to the community, which will, which would allow more people, including some of my current and former students, to more fully enjoy another aspect of our community. Suriya Strobel. Thank you for taking the time to listen to everyone's comments. My name is Suriya. I'm saying that wrong. Strobel, and my family and I reside at eight eighty-five Jefferson Street. I work as a disability specialist at UW Platteville in the Office of Services for Students with Disabilities. For the past eight years, I have been working with and advocating for children and young adults with disabilities. I believe the Platteville Inclusive Playground has a mission to bring everyone together where we, where all can enjoy the space. This playground will provide a space where children and adults with differing abilities can participate in play. Play is a fundamental part of building relationships, and it's a part of every child's growth and development. People will question the cost, but when it comes to inclusivity and true acceptance, the cost shouldn't be a determining factor. I know hearing multiple about this project, that there are some big-ticket items, that they are absolutely necessary for true inclusivity. Children should be able to play with their peers because the playground is accessible. Parents and grandparents should be able to take their children and grandkids to the playground because it's, it's accessible. It is my hope that the city will support this project and move forward with voting to approve the Platteville Inclusive Playground as a city project. Thank you for your time. Mike Hatfield, an inclusive playground would have significant positive impact on my family and other families. My family could more safely participate in things others may take for granted. Kate Demerus, children of all abilities deserve the opportunity to play and interact together in a safe environment. I would be proud to be part of a community who rallies together to support such an important project. Jake, Jacob Corducky, the town I grew up in, New Berlin, Wisconsin, added an inclusive playground while I was there, and it's really amazing how it turned out. It's made the park a popular destination with kids of all ages and abilities playing together. It brought the community together and made it better for the kids there, and I'd like to see the same thing happen in Platteville. Crystal Taylor. I am in favor of the inclusive playground. I would travel thirty miles to bring my child, my children, to this playground. This playground would be amazing for my children and offer equipment for multiple families and their needs. Great, great place for parents as well to communicate and support each other. I had one person register against, Esther Pleva. Ratio of non-challenged individuals to challenged individuals is disproportionate to the cost of removing all playground equipment at Smith Park. And I had one person make a general comment, Erin Plemer. Just a thought about this new inclusive park. I think it would be better to have it placed at Smith Park or Mountain View Park just for the fact that there is already a lot of different things at Legion Park now with baseball fields, pickleball courts, and the Brasky Center. With ballgames going on through summer, there is limited parking. So those are the people who have registered either in favor, against, or in general, and who have written comments. I also have a couple of people who have registered and who are here and want to speak, and so April Burry. April, if you would come to the podium. April, is April here? B U R I. Okay, well, she registered. She wanted to speak. She was not here, okay? She registered in favor, okay? I also have somebody else who registered to speak, Cameron Crace. And you need to start by saying your name and giving your address, where you live. I can give that if you want me to. She, is she okay? Okay.
My name is Cameron Crace. Address is nine six six one.
Yeah, Cuba City.
Cuba City. Hello, my name is Cameron Crace, and I am fourth grade at Westfield Elementary School. I think Platteville needs an inclusive playground because in my class, I have a friend who uses a wheelchair and is not able to go on the playground equipment at school. I'm passionate about my friends with different abilities and them to have fun on the playground, too. I feel we should have wheelchair-accessible play equipment at the park because not all kids are able to play in the same ways. Sometimes my friends feel left out because the wheelchairs cannot go on what chips or sand. If we had a playground with accessible equipment, Platteville would be a more inclusive place, and everyone would be able to go together. We know accessible play equipment can be expensive, but we believe our friends and family are worth it. Thank you for taking to consider this project and the impact that it will have on our community.
Thank you. Okay, folks, I have no one else who's registered to speak, who's registered for, who's registered against, or who, who wants to participate. So, Kim, uh-oh. Oh, yep, you have. I have Kelly Jo. I have your, yep. It was, it's probably in this pile, but I know Kelly Jo that you asked to speak, so. I don't know where the page.
It's on the sheet.
Yeah, it's on the sheet.
Oh, yeah.
She turned it in ahead of time. I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that. My name is Kelly Jo Hatfield, and I live at one-two-three-zero West Hill Avenue in Platteville. My husband and I are raising two children, and both of our boys are on the autism spectrum. We support moving forward with the building of an inclusive playground because of the positive impact that it will, it will have on my family and so many other families in our community. I'm overjoyed with the fact that we have a chance to make a difference. Spaces such as playgrounds that are inclusive are vital to our community. Spaces such as playgrounds that are inclusive are vital to our community. I want a space where my children can play side by side with their peers without the barriers many playgrounds have. Diversity, equity and inclusion are talked about a lot and disabilities are a piece of that discussion. I would like to remind the council and the citizens here in attendance that our community has developed a task force for inclusion, diversity and equity. And there are some very valid pieces in the city's inclusion, diversity and equity statement that are very much pertaining to the discussion that we have had about the inclusive playground. For the sake of time, here's just a small portion of that statement. We believe in equity. We work to break down systems of oppression, bias and hate to achieve a society where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. We believe in diversity because our commonalities and our differences are both assets. We reject barriers that limit and divide us. Voting to move forward with this inclusive playground is an active step in practicing what we preach. We have put together this statement and we need to practice what we preach. A society where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. We reject barriers that limit or divide us. Let's practice what we preach. Some of my closest friends have children with a variety of disabilities. And my little friend Bryn is going to try his darndest to keep up with his peers. But the day he pulls his wheelchair up to the edge of a playground with wood chips, we are the ones who have put a barrier between him and his friends. The day that Bryn pulls his wheelchair up to an inclusive playground, we will hardly be able to contain ourselves because we have created that intentional opportunity for him to thrive. I want to thank you for taking the time tonight to read all of those comments and you can see the ver, the, the wide support that we have for this playground and how important it is for so many families. And I am so proud of this place that I now call home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we've heard from Luke, um, uh, tonight. The item on the agenda is approving a location, a park location, not a specific area or not a specific one hundred seventy-five by one hundred and twenty-five feet or whatever, but approving the general location. And, uh, the, that location, as has been detailed, is, uh, Smith Park? Questions?
Maybe asked about features? I have a couple of questions about feature.
Actually, I don't, I think the, in the thing tonight is about Smith Park. I don't think features have been fully determined. I think they have two or three.
Options.
Options or, you know, and I think sometimes features may be dependent on the final amount of money that's there, but I think it's fair to say that would, whatever my recollection is, and Christine, are you here? You can come to the microphone so that if I get it wrong, you can correct me. But my understanding is that the surface will be a, I don't know, is it rubber or plastic?
Port and place rubbers.
Port and place rubber. So regardless of the other features, it would have port and place rubber. It would also have a fence.
Correct.
With, I don't know, one or two gates. And, and then there would be equipment within and a walking trail is proposed and I've heard it inside and I've heard it outside. So I can't really remember where it finally is.
Walking trail inside and two to four gates. It'll be a minimum of two from a safety standpoint.
Okay, now Ken?
Okay, I just wanted to ask about, uh, uh, one, one item fencing. I live next to Harrison Park. And sometimes at night, there are people using the playground equipment when it's dark. So, um, will this fencing keep out the people? That's one question. What's the height of fencing? May not know that yet. And also will there be some lighting so that you'll be able to see if somebody's in within the fence area and shouldn't be there?
Yes, um, great questions. It'll have minimum security lighting. Uh, whether or not we have lighting beyond minimum security will be determined in coordination with the city and park and rec department, but our plan at this point is, um, security level lighting. I believe that's one light foot or something like that. Uh, and as far as fencing, the exact height has not been determined, but it is not designed to keep anybody out. It is actually just designed to help define the play space and to help families as they are in that play space to, um, clearly define, hide for their children, the space that they're going to play in. So it's not locked. It's not designed to keep people out of it. It's just designed to define the space better. Uh, for many families, that makes a difference, um, for their children.
But it will be locked certain hours. Is that correct?
No, that would not be my intention.
I, I mean, the council could set hours. We have, we have defined park hours. If you are saying, you know, you would like to see this playground locked, it's probably a possibility, but that's not currently the intention of the, the fence is not to secure the playground. It's not to keep people out, to keep people in. As Christina said, the main purpose is to define a play space so that when a parent or a caregiver is watching their children, they are not, you know, tempted to be go beyond that space, you know, into where there, there may be more danger.
Well, the reason I, one reason I bring this up is that, um, in Harrison Park, I see people over there at times and, uh, I believe that they shouldn't be there at certain time when the place is dark. So I, that's, uh, that's my concern.
We'd be glad to work with the city with whatever level of security they feel is needed for the playground. And we can further bring that to discussions in the future. It's good, good feedback.
Like some of this equipment is rather fragile and if, uh, some people get into it, they may not treat it well.
Well. Any other questions?
Um, just a point of clarification. The, the front of us tonight is strictly giving permission for the location that's specified in Smith Park. At which time, if that approval is given, this group is going to be able to start their fundraising. Um, what is the process after that for the council to be updated? Cause one, a, a question, and, and it was something that I read that was a little confusing. The fundraising is for the playground. But I read one place where it didn't include the bathroom renovation or the proposed, um, new parking.
The, the one million dollars of the playground equipment did not include those other things. The entire project is estimated at roughly one point five million. I was just trying to clarify the equipment piece was around a million dollars. And then when you include in the electrical, the fencing, the pathways, the bathroom and parking lot, you're probably looking at about one point five million total for the project. I was just trying to clarify the, the different.
Okay.
Sections.
Um, and, and Kathy, I believe that Luke can answer the question. I believe that, uh, major, uh, this will be a major discussion item for the parks, forestry and recreation or parks, recreation and forestry.
Sure. Yeah. I, I mean, it's, you have some options, first of all. So, I mean, as a council, you can tell us when you want to come back to you or at what point. Otherwise you can direct us to keep it at a staff level or at a committee level until it gets to a certain point that you want it back. So it just depends on how involved you want to be, how many meetings you want specifically to be involved in versus turning it over to staff, this committee and the group to work a little bit and then bring it back.
Yes, I, I personally don't have a, a sense of that. I certainly wouldn't expect the city council to want to micromanage.
Right.
Um, but it does come back that, um, the city council oftentimes are the ones that are asked questions by the public. So the more kept in the loop, um.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure it'll be a major part of Luke's staff report or Adam's staff report.
And we were planning either January or February to come back to the council with an update. Um, so it.
So in addition to that, this, the intent of here is for this to be a city project. So ultimately, when it goes to bidding out and selecting a bidder, the city council will need to be the, the committee that is or the body that is awarding that bid. So you'll have a lot more information at that point in terms of, you know, features and everything like that will be all ready when you're selecting bidder.
And then one other, um, point, I guess I'd like to make on, um, as far as the fundraising, because this is something new that most of us are not familiar with. Um, when it comes to maintenance, is can, at some point, can we hear, build it into a presentation, maybe at some point down the road, for example, how often is that equipment going to have to be replaced? Or the, the rubber mat, because if it's going to become a city.
Responsibility.
Responsibility, we need to have a sense for future maintenance and I guess I would like to, I mean, we're going to have to look at the maintenance part of it and possibly tie that in with fundraising or something.
Certainly. Um, I mean, we can provide those details to you. The playground equipment itself would have similar longevity to current playground equipment that you would see in any average park. The port and place rubber has about a plus or minus fifteen years. Some companies say fifteen to twenty, some say eleven to sixteen, it just depending, but, uh, those would be things that, you know, we would want to then budget for over time so that when we got to that endpoint, um, we'd be prepared for that cost as a, a city and a community. And then we also plan to have, uh, any extra monies that might be raised, put in an endowment that could help with some of those maintenance things in the future. So we'd want to work with the city on that.
Okay, other questions? Otherwise I'm looking for some kind of action.
All right, make a motion to allow the inclusive playground committee to proceed with the fundraising for an inclusive playground relocated within Smith Park and for you would be location or option of receipt or letter C.
A second. You're, you're predetermining it has to be option C or are you saying that that's your preferred location?
That would be my preferred and I believe it was the, oh, we're talking to other people, they're preferred as well.
It is our, our preferred location.
Let's see his preferred location unless there's some other kind of thing found in that area as, as they do site. Okay.
I think we're to change theirs, you know, their preferred on Smith Park, yes, you would be mine.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, to allow, uh, to, to move forward with an inclusive playground at Smith Park with the preferred location of location C. And we have a second. So, um, we had a second by Kathy. So Isaac and Kathy, uh, Candace will vote.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Cop.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for attending and, uh, you, you may stay for the rest of our meeting, but we won't be offended if you leave. And I will be reading another list of names. Okay, we will then return to our agenda and we will now go to ordinance twenty-one oh nine, council rules. Adam.
Yeah, so obviously this has been something that the, uh, council has been reviewing for multiple meetings. Uh, was one of our goals to start looking at individual kind of ordinances that we have in chapters within our municipal code. Uh, so we have spent numerous meetings going over the council rules and what you have in front of you now is kind of the finalized draft. Um, that was given the green light by the council to move towards an ordinance. So, uh, both the city clerk, Klaus, and our deputy clerk, collect worked on this. So what you have now is the kind of finalized draft version of all of the changes that have been incorporated. Um, with looking at going to a new start time of six o'clock, uh, incorporating some of the rules, uh, that we have seen with the agenda, making sure we have the work session added. Um, as well as also being cognizant of kind of our Zoom options that are available for council members. Uh, as well as making sure we're following the most up to date, uh, version of the Robert rules of order. Uh, again, clarifying a little bit better what it means to kind of motion in second and bring something back from the table. So again, what you have in here is kind of the finalized version, uh, which is up for, uh, adoption if you would so choose.
Okay, folks, anybody with questions on any specific change that has been made? We would start six P M. Meetings in January.
January, correct. So this would go into effect on January first.
This would go into effect on January one. Of course, it does include the now inclusion of electronic, uh, meaning, meeting minutes and notices. Changing, uh, what we called the consent calendar to the consent agenda and, uh, some name changes. And then kind of clarifying the, uh, if somebody wants to bring back a motion, how that's done, uh, and action. Any questions? Otherwise I'd seek a motion. Twenty-one oh nine to make the changes as presented to chapter two, section two oh four of council rules effective. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, accept, uh, to make this ordinance change to twenty, uh, and adopt ordinance twenty-one oh nine. Candace will vote.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yeah.
Nichols.
Cop.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let us go on then to, uh, the next item, which is ordinance twenty-one ten amendments to chapter twenty-four. Uh, which is the fire prevention and protection ordinance, Ryan. And Joe, I guess.
How come I heard by Joe? So at your last meeting, um, this was introduced as a informational item to the council. I was unable to be here, but I think Joe and Adam hopefully, uh, addressed, uh, the initial draft with you, but, uh, this was basically a result, uh, partially, uh, of the comprehensive analysis that was done. Um, and some recommendations as we got into that, we just felt it best to just do a comprehensive overview of the entire, um, ordinance. So, uh, that is what we did and, uh, I, I hope everybody's looked through it. I know there was a couple of questions last time about, uh, if it's been addressed with the, the members. Uh, we have done parts of it and it is on our, uh, future meeting plans to go over it in more depth here as it's finalized with the, with the members. And, uh, will also be providing a, a copy of it, uh, to the, the townships for their reference. So should they receive a copy of it? So.
Okay, questions of either Ryan or Joe on the amendments to chapter twenty-four, fire prevention and protection? Any questions? If not, then I would, uh, seek action.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-one ten for modifications to chapter twenty-four, fire prevention and protection.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to approve ordinance twenty-one ten. Uh, modifications, chapter twenty-four, fire protection and prevention. Candace will vote.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item would be, uh, ordinance twenty-one eleven, dogs in municipal parks. Luke.
Yep. So at the, uh, last, uh, meeting of the Parks, Forest and Recreation Committee, the committee, oh, I'm sorry, not the last, the August meeting, I should point out. Uh, the committee voted unanimously to recommend changes to the, uh, municipal ordinance six point zero two A, um, which would allow more dogs in parks under specific conditions. Uh, in making this decision, the committee had asked staff to poll our benchmark cities regarding their allowance of dogs in parks. Uh, and at our last meeting, um, the council asked me to provide that data. Um, so this was just kind of an informal calling poll that I polled, um, various other directors. Um, those that allowed dogs include Bearbu, Burlington, Fort Atkinson, Galena, Lancaster, Menominee Falls, River Falls, Stevens Point, Toma and Whitewater. And those that responded that they did not allow dogs included Monroe, Portage and Richmond Center. Um, and then based on direction from the last committee meeting, um, staff worked with city attorney to. And then based on direction from the last committee meeting, staff worked with city attorney to draft an ordinance that would include those potential changes in ordinance form. So that is redlined in a document that Candace put together for you for review. The changes are primarily in six point zero two A five, and then we have an additional six, seven and seven in there, which kind of outline those changes. Oh, I should apologize. Councilperson Pop also asked us to reach out to the Veterans Honor Roll Committee. I did make a call to the president. They met, I believe, yesterday and provided us a letter late, late this evening. So unfortunately, it's not in your packet, but I believe it has been sent to everyone. If you'd like, I could read it for record, otherwise you all have it as well. But the general gist of it is that they oppose dogs in city park and feel it would further contribute to the disrespect shown to the monuments.
Okay, folks, questions, comments?
Well, we could honor that request. By looking at number seven, A, and change that to read within the Platteville Family Aquatic Center, Harson Park and City Park. That what's being asked?
You certainly could do that, yes. And I, I, if you're of the, in agreement with the Veterans Honor Roll Committee that in, but are, would like to allow dogs in other parks, that would certainly be an option for you.
I would take an amendment to what's on, what's been provided.
Yes, I'm, I'm curious to if any others have heard comments from the public, because I actually had or people talking to me about dogs than the playground. And in general.
Kathy, you need to be closer to the microphone.
Okay. People were not in favor of that making the change. There's a number of people that made comments that not everybody likes dogs. People are afraid of dogs. One individual is allergic to dogs. And one person made the comment that if we're going to do the new playground at Smith Park, what does that do if all of a sudden there's large numbers of dogs up there? Could that be intimidating to, to kids that are in that area? So I guess I'm, I'm right now, I'm concerned about changing it. Currently, they're, they're allowed in Monview Park, correct?
On camp.
On the trail.
Trail.
On the trail.
Park by ordinance.
Yeah.
And then they're allowed in the dog park by ordinance.
And then we have the dog.
Locations where dogs are permitted within parks based on the current ordinance. What I would say, and I believe that the chief has, has reiterated is i- if the council is not in favor of this ordinance, which is, is certainly fine, we would like a directive in terms of some enforcement guidelines, basically saying we need to start, I mean, because essentially, if, if we have this ordinance in existence, we need to start enforcing it as it's written.
And Kathy, I've had several people applaud this saying, you know, yeah, actually, yeah, a group that I saw a lot this summer where, where there was a big sign that said, no domestic animals allowed, have domestic animals there all the time, and it's their only outlet. So, you know, I and it is supposed to be dogs on leashes. It's not like dogs running without leash.
Well, the, the whole issue with the enforcement, though, is can be both ways. I mean, if we make this change, what, how is it enforced if people at a park have a dog running loose? And they're supposed to be on a six foot leash. I mean.
Well, I'm assuming that if, if it were reported, they would be ticketed. Actually, that, that was a question that I had. Let's say that I have a dog and I don't, and I'm in the park, if it's allowed, and I don't have it on a leash, and I, somebody reports it. And so some of the police officer would be the person to come to the park. What would the fine be? And also, at that time, does the police department ask if the dog is licensed? And if they are not, then it that time when the owner is then told they have to get a license? I'm trying to, yeah, just kind of get some more in-depth information about what happens if a dog and the owner is disobeying the rule.
I believe the citation would be two sixty three fifty, so it's a significant fine. As with most things, we try and get voluntary compliance first. And practice of doing when we encounter people with a dog running at large or in the parks, try and make sure that the dog is licensed and give them time to comply with that. And if they don't comply and is, then they would get that citation.
Uh, uh, do you check at that time if the owner, and I don't know this actually, is it state law that a, a dog or any animal, I guess, running at larger, or I should say, I don't want to say that. When is a rabies shot required? Do we, do we check for that, or is that something that's outside the purview of our police department?
The tap into that database, a lot of times we have to do that during normal working hours or business hours. So that if you had it in the evening, you'd have to follow up the next day on that. But when you license a dog, proof of rabies vaccine is required, correct? But to, we don't keep a database of all the dogs in the city, so to know which dogs are licensed and which aren't, you pretty much have to encounter them and then do full licenses when they issued.
So Doug, do we know how many dogs are licensed in the city of Platteville?
You can get a list of that from Grant County. But I mean, again, that's the list of dogs that are licensed, the dogs that are off the grid and not tracked. You, I don't know.
What is the fee for a dog license?
It depends on spayed or neutered.
I, I checked the city's website, and there is the rule. And if you have a dog over a certain age, you're supposed to have a license. I'm going to admit I'm in violation because I have a little dog and I need her license. So would it be conceivable that this change would be licensed dogs could be, because in order to be licensed, you have to have the rabies shot? I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to end up making this take a lot of time for enforcement. And to be honest, one of the, the biggest complaints that I heard from people was not, not so much that people have dogs or that they're, you know, that they seem in parks. It's the fact that people are not cleaning up after them. So huh, you know, when it comes to enforcement, that's, that's not a, you're not going to turn a community into, you know, having the police walk around little pooper scoopers. So, so we need to find a balance. Yeah, I mean, a ton of people have, have dogs and
Adam, it's true that last year was the first year that we included with tax notification, the information about dog licensing. Is that true?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and that will be included this year?
You betcha.
And there's a deadline. And so if you don't have your dog licensed by the deadline, then.
Yeah, so essentially, you have, typically every year you have till March, I believe it's March thirty first, I think is the, the actual deadline. Candace may be able to correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's correct. Is roughly you have till March, and then any point after that, you can still license your dog, but it is an additional fee that is, it's a late fee that's added on.
And so we could, if, if the police were to encounter somebody who didn't have a license, and this is already knowledge, I would say they could be cited right away. I don't know why we wouldn't cite people right away. I mean, some of compliance is understanding that if, that there's consequences to not comply.
Are there other advert, or like marketing or advertising avenues that, that have been tried other than putting something in with the tax information?
There definitely is. We, you know, have used the in the news section that goes in there. We can also do, you know, Jody and I can obviously work on a Facebook promotion campaign. We did one last year, I think, kind of around the, yeah, so there's ways that will again encourage to, you know, promote that every year and kind of happens the same time. So again, it's just kind of getting people into compliance of understanding when they need one and if they should have one, and what happens if they don't have one, so.
But just by sheer fact that this is on the agenda, it's going to be part of a out to the community, and if we do adopt this in some form, that's a perfect time to reinforce tools.
That's it.
We also contact the local veterinarians and let them know that dogs have to be licensed. That might be enough. Owners to be aware of it when they bring the dog in for a checkup or something.
That's definitely something we can look into for sure.
Just a reminder. So is this the entire chapter, chapter on animals, or this is just six point oh two parent A, parent or five? So is there someplace in our regulations that says it's licenses required by whatever date? Okay.
Yeah, this.
It's just in a different section.
Yeah, and it also includes, you know, because I was originally concerned that this, the way it was written would open it up to bringing horses and lions and tigers and whatever, and it doesn't, because we outlaw those on other places at the ordinance, so.
I want to get some clarification here. It says, and look in this letter again, that currently dogs are not allowed in city park. Through that, is that written some other place in this chapter?
Uh, currently written, how, how it's written currently, it's basically.
In other words, if we pass this, is it written some other place that says in city park, you can't have dog?
No, you would need to add that, as I believe Kathy suggested, in seven A, if you wanted to include that, you would make that as an amendment to what is currently proposed here.
Look, do you see any communication issue under seven D, if we open up all the parks? And right now, I guess I'm in agreement not to allow city park. But for item D, for example, if we adopt this, we're saying that people can have dogs at Legion Park except within special events. So is that going to be confusing to people? For example, if Dairy Days, people say we don't want dogs at Dairy Days, are people going to Dairy Day, people that are going to have to reinforce that you can't bring your dog or?
I, I do think that causes some confusion, and it does, was added there purposely, though, because I do think there may be events that aren't appropriate to have animals at. I don't know if there's a to be quite honest, I don't think anyone goes to our ordinances to read rules. So I think it does have to be enforced elsewhere, including during promotions for, you know, event like that, we'd have to be in communication with those groups that are, you know, reserving segments of our park. Do you want dogs? Do you not want dogs? And then it may even fall upon the city that, you know, we may have to make up some temporary signs that can be portable that kind of help to reinforce that and to educate the public of that, so that we have some yard signs that's like, you don't want, you have a special event, you don't want dogs at your event. Here's ten signs that help you to display that. And then, as Doug said, I mean, often, you know, when we're first making those contacts, he's just trying to, you know, just educate people about the, the rules. And I think especially for the first, you know, for a period of time, you want to, you know, use that as your tool of enforcement in, in issues like this. But, you know, then if people are clearly violating, know the rule, then you start with your fines.
Well, I'm looking at seven D. And reading that, it says the sponsor has specifically requested to allow dogs within the park. Does that mean every park or a particular park?
I would say it's defined by the area where the event is taking place.
So it's going to be within a park, a particular park.
Yes. Unless an event takes place over multiple parks, but I can't think of a great example of that offhand.
So in this case, I know that the Family Aquatic Center has a special events, event where they allow dogs in the pool.
Right.
So when, so that would be within a special event, except where the sponsor has specifically requested to allow dogs within the park. So somehow the sponsor, in this case, I suspect the city has said, we want to have the doggy dip or whatever you call it on the last day the pool is open. I believe that's when it is. And so it's a special event, and the quote unquote sponsor, in this case us. I believe the library had some kind of bring your pet and read to them or something in city park this summer. And, and that, and, and so the people who came brought, I don't know if it was just dogs, or was dogs and cats, or?
There was a llama.
Oh, there were a llama. Okay, well, I, I didn't go down to see what kind of animals, but that was a special event where there was a special request to allow.
I would say the intent of D is to not make exceptions to those specific parks. So if someone has, like, let's say, music in the park wants to allow dogs in city park, and you're outlawing adding city park to the list of A, I don't think they're wanting dogs to be there would trump the existing ordinance. So it's actually, I thought about adding something for the dog in park to, to cover your exemption, but I, I kind of figured it was a we know, we all know it's, it's happening, and it's a city event, so it's just kind of there. I didn't feel like it was important enough to write that in the ordinance. But the, the purpose of this is more within areas we would allow dogs. There, if you're having a large citywide special event like that, you could outlaw them at your event.
So it's more or less to keep them out rather than to allow them in. Okay. And I, and I do know that people bring dogs to music in the park.
Right.
I see that a lot.
I think everyone that works in City Hall could attest that we see multiple dogs every day in city park.
It also says in seven B, within twenty feet of a playground. So to a previous question about dogs running playground equipment in the park, and this would indicate that you could not, well, first of all, the dog shouldn't be up family, it shouldn't be within twenty feet of the park.
And that's another reason I do believe we may need to have some temporary signs that go up in areas where we see notice problems, because I, I do think that's going to take some education. So we're in playgrounds where we have, see problems, we may have to put those temporary signs in place.
I think that's going to be really, really important in Smith that new playground. Especially. Given the fact that I think twice as many people have dogs now as before COVID, at least that's what I noticed in my neighborhood. And if we have the signage that specifically says on a leash, personally, I'm willing to try it, see how it goes. If we have a lot of problems, then I guess it's up to the city council to say, well, we tried it and people didn't operate, and I'm sorry for the people who did, but maybe we can't continue this, but I would be willing to try it.
Was that a motion?
I could make that motion if I can find it here somewhere.
No.
Want to make it?
No, I.
I'm ready to make a motion, yes. I move to approve ordinance twenty one eleven to make the changes to chapter six oh two A, dogs in municipal parks.
Can I make an amendment?
Oh, we would have to have a second to the motion first.
Okay.
Sorry, do we have a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now, Jason.
I would like to amend the motion to include I would like to amend the motion to include, um, city park on the list of parks that do not allow dogs.
What about, um, family aquatic center and Harrison Park?
That's where he's.
Those are already on.
They're already there.
I would just add city park to that list.
Are you adding city park?
He's making a mo, he's making a motion to amend and add city park to that list in seven A would say Platteville Family Aquatic Center, comma Harrison Park, comma city park.
Okay.
Okay. Jason has made, uh, has, um, proposed an amendment. So do we have a second to that amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a second to an amendment. Are there any other amendments that anybody is proposing? Otherwise we will vote first on the amendment. So first we vote on Jason's amendment, uh, adding city park to the list. Candace?
Dos.
Yes.
Killian? Nichols? No.
No.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we vote on the entire motion or the entire thing, uh, with, uh, city park added to Harrison Park and the family aquatic center. That's the only change that's been made. And that was just made through amendment. So now Candace, we will vote on ordinance twenty one eleven as amended.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian? Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
No.
Motion carries.
Let us then move to the next item on our agenda, which is resolution twenty one twenty seven, Broski Center Care Committee. Adam.
Yes. So, um, as we've talked about for a couple of meetings now, uh, within the transfer agreement from inspiring communities was a requirement that the city of Platteville created a care committee, uh, directly in regards to the Broski Center. Uh, so we have worked with, uh, kind of coming up with the structure of what that would entail. So as we've talked about, uh, we have a city staff liaison, which, uh, Debbie Sigworth has agreed to be on that. Uh, one of the questions we would be looking for is obviously to have a common council representative. And at the last meeting, uh, council member Cobb, kind of recommended herself and said she'd be willing to step into that. So the other things we'd be looking for essentially is a Parks Foresting Recreation Committee representative to be on here as well as an inspiring community representative. And then at large volunteer members. So with any of our committees, we always have a resolution that kind of follows. So I put this together, basically just kind of starting this out, uh, we'd be looking at having a total of 15 at large potential members that could be on this committee. Uh, and what we talked about is making sure that no more than four of those individuals would be able to reside outside of the city limits. So again, this committee would be open to, uh, non-residents as well, since the Broski Center can be, uh, you know, essentially rented by anyone. Uh, but we want to make sure again that the majority of those at large members do still reside in the city. So uh, what we have here would be the council officially creating this, and then it would be a subcommittee of the park recreation and forestry department. Uh, and they would continue to kind of provide updates, uh, to park recreation and forestry, which then would be provided to you guys as the council.
Okay. So let's have, first of all, anybody who has questions about the care committee, uh, resolution twenty one twenty seven. I did not read this thoroughly. Were their term limits set on this?
No. So we do not have any term limits specifically set on this. So it is, if you're on there, you're on there as long as you want to be on.
For life.
Correct.
Okay. These are life.
These are life sentences. You cannot get.
Life sentence. Okay. All right. I just kind of wanted to know that. Uh, it, it says it can't, it's comprised of one council rep. Uh, my question is, can, uh, any of the 15 at large volunteer members also be council reps?
Yes, there is no limitation to that as well.
So, okay. Just thought I, or, or you know, if Jason, Jason's on parks for recreation and forestry, if he wanted to be on this, I, I would assume we have to limit it to no more than two.
You could technically have no more than three, because then you wouldn't.
No more than three.
So any, once you have four, you got a quorum. So.
Well, you know, as people talk about this goofy negative quorum, so I just want to.
Yes.
Which I never understood in the first place, but.
Right.
And I guess my question is, uh, the committee shall be a subcommittee, the Parks Forest and Recreation Committee. So we vote as a council every year for the council representative then, or, or if we vote this evening?
I mean, you have that option. So essentially just like any other committees that there is a council representative for, it's more of an ask by the council president. So the council president will ask, just like, you know, every year.
So we'll add this.
You'll fill out the sheet if as long as, you know, right now Kathy wants to continue to be on that committee. Unless somebody really has a desire, um, you know, she would continue to be on there.
But it will be an appointment every year.
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's, I was just confused because of the way the wording, it would be a subcommittee. I wasn't sure how that worked. Okay.
Yeah, I guess. And so I guess when we have the motion, what we're adopting is the resolution.
Yes.
And then after that I would make the appointment.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions? Hey, do I hear a motion about adopting the resolution? We don't.
So moved.
Okay. So motion Jason's made an appo, uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty one twenty seven, creating, uh, the Broski Center Care Committee. So we have a motion to adopt the resolution. Uh, Candace will vote.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yeah.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And in further action, uh, Kathy Cop is appointed as the common council representative. And I don't think we vote, we don't need to vote. Okay, good. All right. Next on the agenda is contract twen- thirteen twenty one fuel for twenty two twenty three.
Correct. Currently we have a contract with Legion Oil through December thirty first of this year. Uh, we bid out a contract for the next two year period for refueling the tanks at Street Department Garage Wastewater Plant. And so we have diesel fuel and unleaded gasoline for our city vehicles and a small truck mounted tank uh, for our small engines. Um, contract would be to refill these tanks. There, uh, we also, uh, worked with UW Platteville. They were requested to be part of the bid. They have agreed to, uh, partner with us on this bid. There were two bidders. Uh, Legion Oil is the low bidder at eight cents a gallon over cost. And so, um, we are recommending awarding contract thirteen twenty one with alternate bids for you, uh, for UW Platteville to Legion Oil.
Okay, questions of Howard on this fuel contract? If not, do I hear a motion?
Some question Barb still be hired the $25 administration fee will still be in there then?
Oh, correct. Yes.
Then I would make a motion to, to award contract thirteen dash twenty one fuel contract for the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three with the alternative bids for UW Platteville. Legion Oil at the bid price of eight cents over wholesale price.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Kent to award the contract, fuel contract to Legion Oil. At eight cents over wholesale price, Candace will vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that, and that concludes the action portion of the agenda. We'll move on to information and discussion. In that the A, B, and C are all related to the same. Oh, the same project, I guess I would say, the street discontinuance for Uber Socks Drive, reconfigure lots in the Uber Socks development and a conditional use permit for a quick trip car wash. Uh, Joe, we'll go with you.
Yeah. So as you mentioned, these are all, all related. So it kind of started, uh, when, uh, Kunis Country bought the Uber Socks dealership. But that purchase included, I don't know entirety or partial ownership of the mobile, uh, service station out there. They don't want to be in that business. So they approached QuickTrip to see if they had some interest in purchasing that property. They are interested. So, uh, QuickTrip would like to purchase that, basically redevelop that property in its entirety. They would, uh, demolish the building and fuel, uh, canopy and pumps, uh, build what they call their gen three store, generation three store, which is much bigger than their current facility uh, here in Platteville. Um, so they would reconfigure that lot, bigger building, uh, uh, fuel canopy. They would also purchase a lot that's basically immediately to the south of that on the other side of Uber Socks Drive. It's currently used for uh, display overflow parking for the dealership. They would install a car wash and then a diesel, uh, fueling station on that site. Um, it, cause it would straddle Uber Socks Drive, which kind of, uh, creates some concerns and issues for them. And so they, uh, have some interest in, in the discontinuing Uber Socks Drive. To go along with that, uh, Kunis Country has some desire to reconfigure their parking lots, entrance areas for their display vehicles as well as their, uh, employee parking areas. And to just, uh, modify, upgrade the, uh, entrance areas to their facility. So they also have an interest in, uh, discontinuing Uber Socks Drive to give them some more flexibility on how that may lay out. Um, so that's kind of where the request to discontinue Uber Socks Drive came from. So that it would be basically the, the physical features of the street would primarily stay there. It would still be the main access for those properties. Uh, but it would basically be a privately shared driveway. At that point, there would be, uh, access easements, maintenance agreements between the two. Uh, as far as future long-term maintenance as well as snow removal and so forth, would all be privately done between the two of them. Um, our only real concern with that is to make sure that adequate access was maintained for the emergency vehicles, primarily fire trucks, their large vehicles. Uh, and obviously we know that Kunis Country is not in the business of designing parking lots and facilities. So when they had that, uh, they're going through their design, we want to make sure that they're aware that they need to maintain adequate access. So our recommendation is to have a memorandum of agreement with them that basically spells out here are the code requirements that have to be followed as you go through your redesign it. We want to keep it flexible enough that as they, their plans evolve, they don't have anything finalized yet. Um, that they have some ability to do that, but at the same time that they're going into it fully aware of what the access requirements are for fire lines and access. So we've met with them. They're fully aware of that, but I think it's kind of redundant. I mean, the codes are already there. They have to follow, but I think putting in front of them and having them sign this document is beneficial to make sure they're fully aware of that, that concern on our end. So that's basically the, uh, the Uber Socks Drive portion. So they'd also, there's four lots that front up, front on that, uh, street now. So those would be reconfigured to obviously include what was the Uber Socks Drive right away. And then combined to just have two lots, one for car, uh, QuickTrip and then one for Kunis, uh, dealership. So that is the, the CSM that is also submitted for review. And then obviously I mentioned as part of the QuickTrip, uh, redevelopment, they would have the car wash, uh, feature. Uh, under our ordinance, a car wash is considered a conditional use. So it does require approval of the conditional use permit. And I think it's really classified as such because, well, a couple of reasons. One, um, one of my concern with car washes, there's a tendency for people to use a car wash on the same day. You know, you get that nice winter day when after it snows and everybody's car is full of salt. So they want to go out there. There has to be some ability to have, uh, stacking without causing traffic problems. So we want to always have the chance to review, review, review that. Uh, they do have that ability built into their site plan. Also, they tend to be fairly noisy if they've got a blower, which most of them do nowadays. So we want to make sure that it's in a location that is not going to cause a problem, especially residential. So there really isn't anything nearby that's going to have a negative impact with that. And there's actually a car wash already on the dealership property. So it seems to be a, an appropriate location for, for a car wash. So I think that uh, is not an, a non-issue. Um, so that's in a nutshell, basically what, what they're requesting. Uh, just for some clarification, as I mentioned, Kunis, I, I think their plans are still kind of up in the air as far as they exactly hardly do that. But QuickTrip is really gung ho about getting this, uh, up and running. So they'd like to do all their bidding and designing and so forth this winter and start construction in March if weather allows. So they're kind of driving the timeline on this part.
Okay. So Joe mentioned, uh, uh, one of the things we talked about in plant commission were the easements for, uh, utilities.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't touch.
Cause there are easements along Uber Socks or there are utilities, water and sewer and probably storm sewer along, uh, Uber Socks Drive. So what's the word on?
There, there's a, it's actually a, a provision in state statute that anytime a, a public street is discontinued, any rights, um, for, to access and maintain, uh, existing facilities for utilities, both below ground and above ground basically remains in its current state. So that would be to the full width of the current right of way boundary. So we would have no issues moving forward with, um, getting to and maintaining our utilities. There are also some, uh, private easements. Um, I think, you know, so the utility electric or cable or whatever that would remain in place as well. So they have no, no need or desire to move any of those other utilities.
Okay. And, and for the benefit of those who weren't at plant commission, Uber Socks Drive would be discontinued, but that former road is road or whatever you want to call it, street would be the main entrance, both for the QuickTrip and for Kunis. They are not proposing a new entrance. The only thing they're proposing is that this, it's not a public street anymore. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Right. And so the main entrance for both would remain where it's at. It would just not be a public street. So our, 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 uh, street department wouldn't be plowing it anymore or anything like that. And Howard is giving a thumbs up to that. Uh, the other thing, my understanding, uh, from in terms of traffic flow for the car wash and the, uh, diesel fueling station, the cars and trucks would enter on that former Uber Socks Drive. And they would either turn left to the QuickTrip gas station and store or whatever you want to call it, or they would turn north, right or south for the fueling of semis and/or to go through the car wash. And there would be an exit for the car wash onto that vision drive.
Vision drive.
Vision drive and also for trucks. So they would exit farther south because it would be one way through there. It'd be one way from north to south. Is that correct?
Uh, mine are seeing the, the car wash traffic would, the, the vehicles would enter from the north, heading south and exit onto Vision Drive. The semi trucks that would go and feel would enter from the south.
Was that your understanding too?
Yeah, semis would come from the south side of his drive and then head north that way is how I understood it.
And then I, I didn't mention too, that the, the dealership also owns the, the additional vacant lot to the south of what's included in that CSM. Um, they have some long range plans to do some additional development of that site too, but there would be a, a shared, an additional shared uh, driveway, private driveway, south of that car wash to, that would be used and maintained by both QuickTrip and dealership. That would also provide additional access to those properties. And again, that would be something we wouldn't have to maintain, but it would provide access to both lots.
But the only thing I don't think was mentioned at the planning commission is would we be quit claiming the land where the current Uber Socks Drive is to both ownerships then?
Means we're discontinuing that. It's actually kind of the, the, the process is when a, a street is discontinued, it automatically is transferred to the lots on each side.
Right.
And then through the approval of the CSM, then basically that gets incorporated those courses.
I would say one of the other things I brought up plenty question is that they're more likely on Uber Socks Drive would change that from asphalt street to a concrete.
To concrete.
Due to the weight and traffic of the heavy trucks.
Yeah, I didn't mention. Yeah. So, uh, let's go one at a time now in terms of questions. Anybody with questions on the discontinuance of Uber Socks Drive? Discontinuing it as a public street, knowing that we, the easements remain, and this basically removes it from our, um, mileage to maintain. Correct? Any questions on that? Okay. Then the next item after the discontinuance of the street was the, uh, well, let me get that. Well, let me get back. Was the CSM, reconfiguring the lots in the Uber Socks development. So right now that. That I think it would be a total of three lots that get combined for the QuickTrip. And kind of three lot, yeah, the that map isn't in here. Not, not really the map that we had at the plan commission. I don't, I don't. Think the one that had those outlined. But is that about right? It's. Taking three lots that are farther west, making them one lot for the QuickTrip. And then what remains would be Kunis. So the certified survey map is really for. The QuickTrip.
Yeah, it's both. I mean, the the Cunis dealership. Their their one lot is getting larger. So it's, like I said, it's taking four lots and reconfigured into two. So they're.
All right, any questions on the CSM? And then the car wash is a conditional use permit. Any questions on a this conditional use permit? Create a car wash. Or to allow a car wash. Any questions on anything in this whole QuickTrip Uber Socks thing? Okay, then let's move on to appeal of the historic. Preservation Commission denial. Joe.
Yes, so this is regarding the the property at one thirty Market Street. It's the the fifty fifty Tavern. They had some signage, actually that was already in place that was installed prior to approval. But anyway, since it's in the law, the. Local historic district. It did require a certificate of appropriateness approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. There was signage at the rear of the property along Furnace Street as well as the front of the property along Market Street. The signage to the rear was approved without any issues. But there's a a sign on the front porch and I included some pictures. It would be the smaller of the signs. Is the subject matter for needing approval that was denied by the commission. So the owners have requested an appeal to the council to. Overall, overrule that denial and grant approval of that signage, which is a an allowance under our ordinance. So that is their request to approve that sign. And I have a couple of different pictures. Expecting that. As included the. Minutes from the commission meeting.
Okay, anybody with questions on this? Be the small sign on the left-hand side as you look at the front of one thirty Market Street. It's a sign that says, I can read it, but it's on a wrought iron holder, I guess. Any questions?
Or not so much in general, just this building itself, but then with the the historic preservation committee. My question being, if I get this sent to me. Do any of the current members that are on there now own a building in that district?
Uh, any? Buddy own a house in the just in a property in the.
Property could be commercial or.
Or either, well.
I I'm not aware that any of the. Members have any ownership of property in a district. One of the members have a has a. A residence that is privately designated, but not within the the district.
You have two of them? I thought Beth Frieder's house was also designated.
I don't think it's designated locally. It's on the national register. Or it's proposed to be designated on the register.
And a reason for the denial was what?
Well, that that's why I included the minutes because to be totally honest, I don't fully understand the reasoning myself, even though I was at the meeting. Perhaps Mr. Killian could explain it further since he voted in majority.
I have no particular addition to this.
So do you know why this? This sign was denied?
Cause it's one thing, it's out in the front. And the business is at the back and you don't walk through the building to get to the business on the back. So we. Disapproved the sign and we suggested here that you put the sign in a location which is away from the porch itself.
Away from the porch, meaning on the back?
On the back has numerous signs that have the same appearance. So. There are plenty of signs on the on the back of the business already. So this this sign up up in the front there doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't do much except to say. Well, they have a business there, but it doesn't tell you how to get at it.
Okay, so you believe the denial was because. The sign for the business is on the front and you enter the business through the back.
That's the way I look at it.
All right, so this will be on our agenda for action next time, whether to. Grant the den- appeal or whether to uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's decision. Relative to this sign. Is that correct?
Okay, I have one additional question quick. Have you gotten any other feedback from businesses, from other businesses in the historic district in terms of like? Kind of how they're feeling about standards and stuff?
Yeah, unfortunately, not a lot. So I, Tammy ends, I did work with her to send out. You know, an email saying that the the council's doing a review of the procedures and process and if they had any comments. Please provide that. And she actually sent out two different occasions, I think. At this date, I've only received four comments, but I'm. My plan is just whatever ones I get, I'm literally cutting, pasting and putting in a memo. So you'll read it directly.
All right, well, that ends that agenda item. Our next agenda item then is the twenty twenty one city goals quarterly review. Or quarterly report, pardon me.
Yeah, so so what you have in front of you is obviously everything that we have been working on in twenty twenty one and just kind of some updates. So again, I wasn't planning to go into too depth here in detail. But this, you know, kind of look this over and obviously if you have any questions or concerns, please send them to me. And we'll do some further kind of due diligence, but you can see, we obviously have been very busy in twenty twenty one and still November, still two more months. But there are a lot of projects that we were able to complete, some that we have kind of started and will more than likely blend into. Twenty twenty two city goals that we will present to you in January and have you guys officially adopt those as kind of a practice that we do. But as you can see, some of those ones, you know, particularly that we're going to be looking at again is looking at a tied hosted event in twenty twenty two. That is one that's going to kind of blend in there, you know, working on our marketing mission statements. That's something where you're going to be seeing that coming to the council here, kind of in winter, going over the mottos that now we have been able. You know, communication specialist Richards has been kind of keeping those and putting those together. So. We're going to have that come to the council for review as well as the potential logos that could be used. Looking at historic preservation week and kind of how we can do that again in twenty twenty two and kind of tie that into a flyer. And then obviously staff is working on kind of finalizing a lot of the outstanding CIP projects and kind of finishing those. So that's what you have in front of you here. So again, take some time, look this over. And if you have any questions, by all means, send them my way and. Myself and staff will do some due diligence for you.
At this point, does anybody have any? Questions on what's been provided? Otherwise, as Adam has said, read through if you have additional questions or need clarification or. Believe something was omitted that should be included. There's been a lot going on and it's pretty easy sometimes to. Perhaps not include everything because. Just kind of forget it. All right, then, uh, let's move on to the budget update.
Yes, so not too much to present to you tonight, but just kind of a reminder. That next Monday, so that will be the fifteenth at six o'clock. I will be doing the city presentation of the budget for anybody in the public who would like to see that. So that is going to be occurring in person. At the police training room. So we do that every year and kind of go over everything that we've been discussing.
Are you going to also broadcast Facebook Live?
We will see. I'll have to work with Joni on that. We certainly would like to do that, but we'll try to figure it out. We'll see how we, you know, that's, we have some meetings going on here, so we'll have to figure that out. But. Our intention would definitely be either to record it and then make sure that we can replay it. We'll figure out a way to make that happen.
Okay.
But as far as the budget, what I can kind of let you know is we have now kind of received all of the kind of missing information that we were looking for. So definitely kudos to Director Maurer. She put in about a two percent increase in what we were anticipating for insurance rates to go up. And we were pretty close to the head on that. So that did not actually impact the budget. There was a little bit of an impact there, but we were able to definitely put that in. Some good news, we did see our municipal service payment go up. So we actually got fifteen thousand dollars more. Than what we were anticipating. So that is why I'm able to tell you, we are now showing. A little bit more of a decrease than what we originally presented. If you recall during the presentations. We were showing about a three point, roughly three point four percent increase, which was about twenty seven cents. With everything now with the insurance, with all the changes that we've been able to kind of sharpen the pencil. We now have it at a twenty five cent increase. So that is what is kind of being proposed. So that will be the presentation. I'll explain to the public kind of where all that went in, all the changes, everything that you saw. And then again, what will happen then is on the twenty fourth, I believe, or not twenty third. Is the actual presentation that occurs here at the council meeting for obviously the public again to kind of see all the information again. And for the council to kind of look over any questions or concerns that you may have. But then we would be asking for the council to adopt that budget that night. So that's kind of where we're at.
And Adam, that's a public hearing format.
That is a full public hearing format. Correct. So there'll be a presentation. There'll be an opportunity for anybody in the public to express any concerns they may have. As well as you as council members. And then the expectation is that, you know, we need to take all that feedback and kind of make some decisions that night. Because the sooner we get that information into a finalization stage, we need to make sure we get the tax bills and everything out. But obviously, we have, you know, had a couple of meetings. Obviously, we've run over all this. So we have tried to continually look into ways that we can chip away at that number. So right now we're looking at about a twenty five cent increase. Then again, we'll go over kind of all the reasons of where that is and how we've kind of gotten to that, but it's been the same information. And again, if we can continue to look at ways we can reduce that. We certainly will try to do that. So that number again may change as we even kind of go in. But right now, that's kind of the number we're looking at, kind of where we've kind of settled right now is at that. So.
And I see on pages fourteen and fifteen of five, three, eight, one, eight, that you've kind of detailed and. Shown a picture here of where your cents go and how many cents go to where and kind of a history of our assessment. So.
Yeah, we're definitely trying to get that information, the information more out to the public. And as you can see, those information we already have in there. We now are even lower than that. So. That's obviously shows good news that we are continually trying to chip away at that. But yeah, our goal is again to try to get as much information out to people. Again, we. Have nothing to hide. We're going to show you what's going on so we can figure it out.
Good. Any other questions of? I would only, you mentioned several, I guess it's kind of budget related. You mentioned several grant applications that are being assembled or submitted or. Intended, any updates on how you, how the grant applications are going? There's lots of money out there.
Yes, so if you could see stuff coming out of my ears right now, that has been my focus the last two weeks has been grants. We did, I hit the submit button this afternoon on a one for potentially family advocates in regards to a. Kind of, I think now I can officially say it since I've submitted the grant. I know they've tried to keep that a little bit on the DL, but. Potentially they're looking at a kind of shelter expansion. So that is one that the city put a green light on. Tomorrow I will be looking at submitting one for childcare, which is a partnership between UW Platteville Southwest Health. And the city as well, looking to create kind of a, it's a task force, which also then incorporates the potential of creating a childcare center. That would be located near the hospital. We have had numerous meetings in regards to kind of the inclusive playground that has been approved tonight. There is a DOA grant that is out there potentially for some funding. So both myself, Director Carroll, Director Howard Peters, and our engineer have been working on submitting that. So that actually is something that does have to go through council approval. So right now Director Carroll is kind of working on putting the finishing touches on that timeline. So we can kind of get that information in front of you to essentially approve that. We also then have been looking at a tap grant that potentially is.
Tap meaning transportation.
Transportation. What is it, Howard?
Assistance.
Assistance.
Transportation alternatives.
Yes. So what that is, is that is a grant now that has been extended till January. So we have asked for Angie Wright, who is kind of our grant assistant guru that we've been working with. She's going to be working with us on applying for that in January, which will be for the trail systems. So looking at two, two to three trail areas, two that we feel very confident in, one that would be. Definitely we would like to see, but has a little bit more challenges with acquiring property and things like that. And then the museum, as Eileen knows, has been working on a grant in regards to the Department of Tourism. Working through a marketing grant there in regards to their capital campaign. So we're very hopeful that will be submitted. So. And then just in the meeting I was in today, the infrastructure bill now has a slew of grants that I will be sending you guys and kind of the weekly update to know about. So there's billions of funding that is kind of related to multiple items there. So. Definitely, you know, with this document that we created, this capital improvement plan, I think is really going to put us ahead because. We have already been able to document, you know, the number of streets that we would like to see done as well as projects. So that. You know, on the call today, they definitely said, if you have that kind of shovel ready and basically showing the costs. That elevates you on the list. So that was a big, I think, win for obviously you guys as the council to adopt that and for us to staff to create that. So. We got a lot going on, but we'll.
Right. And then we've been part of Southwest Regional Planning Grants, also this was for.
That's right. I forgot about that one. So there's, yes, we are, we are working on, we have a request out for proposals right now. For engineering firms to do a two kind of two phase, a one first study, looking at our wastewater treatment plant. In regards to updates that can be done there. And then that would allude into a potential grant application for getting funding to do those upgrades. And then the other one we're waiting on is a partnership with Prosperity Southwest. And I believe Grand County Economic Development, workforce housing and kind of different housing initiatives. That's another one that was submitted that potentially we would be a part of. So. There's plenty.
And and there may be more.
There may be more.
I know maybe more. And the the great part of this is that we have. People who are willing to come forward and work. I mean, even the playground project, if. If the preliminary work hadn't been done, I mean, the whole concept of shovel ready, I can tell you the only reason we have Marquinhua new. And the roundabout on that area is because we had a project. That was ready to go during the last set of two thousand eight monies or whenever that was. I don't even remember. But that was a project ready to go. So it's really important.
Yeah, it's.
To be forward thinking and ready to go.
It's huge to have the multiple community partners that we do. And obviously, as you guys saw tonight, just the enthusiasm from the community as a whole. We have a lot of different. Groups and organizations that are trying a lot of different things to tackle. Numerous topics within not only our city, but nationally as a whole. So it's exciting.
Which brings me to kind of concluding the meeting on this Thursday, City Hall will be closed. It is the celebration of Veterans Day and there is a program planned in City Park, although. The outlook of rain.
Correct.
I've heard that the call will be made by noon tomorrow and then it would be in the auditorium downtown or downstairs. If I, if the call is made. So that program starts at eleven o'clock. And is certainly open to the public, everyone. So. Uh, that's what I know.
Can I just add one thing for information for the council to make sure that everybody's tuned into this? We're. Holidays are coming up and I know the street department always does the decorations on Main Street. Kiwanis this year is. Doing lighting on the gazebo and putting a holiday tree in there. And we've been working with the city with Shannon in particular. And Kiwanis's made arrangements, we're going to be putting wreaths on the front of City Hall building. So the the, we're going to look good for the. Quite festive, should look really good, but that'll be happening. I think we're looking at the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Right before, right.
So it's.
The twenty ninth.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Like I said, we have. Like I said, we have, we have a community that has lots to celebrate. Uh, we've had a challenging time, but I think uh we've learned things during our challenges and I think uh we've grown stronger. So um great things for us. So I ha- I'm looking for one other motion. We have a motion by Kathy and a second by uh Ken to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Candace, you can write that down as unanimous. Thank you, everyone.